Welcome to the May, uh, no, it's June, isn't it? To the June 16th, 2014 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor Paul Monson from the St. Augustine Lutheran Church with us this evening to give the invocation. If you would rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, welcome Pastor.
Let us pray. The Lord Heavenly Father, your one and only precious Son has taught us to pray. Give us this day our daily bread. We know our daily bread requires good government, good jobs, and a good economy, so we pray to the Lord for all three. I also pray to the Lord for our local government, and our local economy, and our local job situation, especially those who are on Troy City Council and our mayor, that they would have wisdom to do what's best for our people and for our economy. As they are responsible for the taxpayers' money, may they manage it wisely. And when we have disagreements as citizens, and we have disagreements as politicians, may we express our disagreements respectfully, that we might be instruments of your peace. In Jesus' name I ask it. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
All present, our first order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentations. C1 is a recognition to Sam LaRato, Lamorato, and we will be postponing this item this evening due to a death in the family. Our thoughts and prayers are with the Lamorato family tonight. C2 is a recognition to Kurt Bovenseep and Alex Belik for the City Works Exemplary User Award, and I would ask if I could meet Tim Rishnik, Director, Department of Public Works Director, and Gert, the IT Director, if I could meet at the podium. Gert, I'm just gonna butcher your name, so I'll meet you at the podium.
Harris Govan.
I got it. I won't meet you there if I could.
Okay, come on down. Good evening Mayor and City Council. Tim and I are pleased to announce that the city of Troy was selected by our software vendor Azteca as a recipient of the City Works Exemplary User Award at their May 2014 User Conference. For those of you that may not be familiar with City Works, it is the software system that the city uses to manage customer service requests, as well as contracts and work orders related to the city's infrastructure, such as water, sewer, streets, parks, sidewalks, signs, and lighting.
Good evening. DPW and IT have worked together to ensure the software is well-used to its full potential, improve efficiencies, and therefore maximizing our investment into City Works. Before we call up Dawn Fletcher from Azteca to present the award and explain a little bit about it, we would want to thank City Council for their support of our recommendations for this software and other software that has allowed us to provide this service. Also, we would like to ask Alex Belik and Kurt Bovenseep to come up and accept the award on behalf of the city. Although there were many staff members involved with various projects, Kurt and Alex did the lion's share of work and should deserve the majority of the credit for these programs.
Hi.
I'd like to introduce Dawn Fletcher from Azteca.
Hi, my name is Dawn Fletcher, and I am the Account Manager for the city of Troy. I represent City Works Azteca Systems, and we are a GIS-centric work management software system, and since 1996, we have been streamlining the way agencies manage their public infrastructure. Each year, City Works honors organizations that have shown outstanding effort and achievement within our user community. With more than 500 organizations around the world using City Works, it is often difficult to narrow down this list to who truly exemplifies extraordinary application and usage of City Works. I nominated the city of Troy, Michigan for the City Works Exemplary Award because in the four years since your implementation, you have been known throughout our community for your progressive use of technology in order to better serve your citizens. Over the years, you have put a lot of thought and effort into your City Works workflows, and the payoff is an efficient and creative work process that other City Works users strive to emulate. We have always been able to rely on the city of Troy to be a reference when needed, and appreciate all that you do to promote the advantages of City Works. We appreciate your dedication in empowering GIS for public asset management, and in addressing the critical needs of the community you serve. It is my pleasure to award the city of Troy, Michigan with the City Works Exemplary User Award for 2014. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been lucky enough to be the keeper of this award, but it is really my honor tonight to pass along this great award to the most deserving of the two people. So if I could, Kurt and Alex could come forward. On behalf of the city of Troy, I would like to present this award to you, and thank you for everything you've done for the city to get us the Exemplary City Work User 2014 Award. Thank you so much, Kurt. Thank you so much. Troy, New York, correct?
Nashville, Tennessee.
C3 is a recognition to Billy Casper Golf, and we are going to pass on this item also tonight, and we will be making the presentation at the next council meeting. We have a fun item coming up. I saw a little bit of this this afternoon. C4 is an introduction of the Troy Garden Party with an introduction by Brenda Carter, the interim Assistant to the City Manager, and I know you have a special employee with you, and I'll let you make the introductions also, but welcome Brenda.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Council. We have a very exciting presentation for you tonight. It's about our garden party, so soon as we can get it up. Okay.
Brenda, speak into the microphone if you can.
Okay. As you can see on the screen, in the beginning, we had the City Manager's atrium, and this picture was taken the beginning of May. We were looking at the atrium, trying to figure out what we could do to make it more attractive. So while we were noodling over the idea, Shannon came up with some ideas. This is my colleague Shannon Lohr. Please.
Currently in the Treasurer's Office.
Good evening. The microphone is important to us recording, if you could. Thank you. I know, take a deep breath. You did a great job this afternoon.
There once was a time when the atrium was always planted, but in the past few years, it has become overgrown with weeds. Perennials needed thinned, and quite frankly, it was an eyesore. Nobody even looked through the window anymore. This photo was taken after weeds were pulled. What was left was boring.
Although we came up with a lot of ideas, we really didn't put any of them together. This picture was taken at the centerpiece of the atrium. Some suggested fountains, some suggested planting perennials and annuals in it, but the bottom line was, when we got to it, we really didn't have a solid idea, and then we got a suggestion from an employee from the Treasurer's Office.
The HR department had just started Salad Day, in which we each bring an item, and we get to enjoy a healthy lunch together. Unfortunately, I forgot to sign up in April, and I thought to myself, if I could just plant a cherry tomato, I wouldn't have to worry about forgetting, and I would have something to share. So I asked Beth in the Manager's Office if I could have a tomato, and she talked to Brenda, and then Jeanette and I talked about Beaumont Hospital and how they have an employee garden, and how great it would be if we could just go into the atrium and grab a fresh vegetable for lunch. And the next thing that I knew...
We started getting volunteers for the garden. There were a lot that came, and you want to explain all of them that came in?
It was an overwhelming time to sit down to see that a single cherry tomato had grown into a crew of excited gardeners. The Parks Department was in there practically overnight, cleaning the area and prepping it for us to get to work. The Recreation Department took interest in planting and has planted at the community center, with donations to the Friendship Club to plant perennials. Charlie, in the Buildings Department, wanted to volunteer, so he sealed our garden signs. Steve has found our theme song to plant to, and Laura donated her lettuce, and it's become my first-floor eyes to the garden. Sue and Irene in the Clerk's Office helped plant, and Cheryl joined in to harvest for June Salad Day. Kathy and Sina in the Attorney's Office have been out planting and mulching, and adding great ideas and insight. Kathy has brought in annuals and onions. The next assistants jumped right in and were the first to get their hands dirty. On a beautiful warm day, Marcus and Maggie were out there adding sweat equity and breaking up the soil with a hand teller. All of this could not have started without the support of Mr. Kishnik and the Manager's Office that encouraged us to work together, enjoy what we have accomplished.
The excitement was really growing, so of course, you know Cindy wouldn't miss an opportunity like this, so we had Cindy and Andrew from the City of, uh, Community Affairs Office join in, and our organic gardener, Paul Evans, he was right there giving us pointers on gardening, doing it organically. Of course, you know, our treasurer was there because the idea was sparked from Shannon. Brian from Purchasing and Mary Beth, they were excited, so they joined in. Human Resources, Tanya wanted a food truck, but she said, "This will do for right now", so Tanya started getting in, and then HR started getting involved. Troy residents was very, very excited about this, because each time they come into the City Hall, they would stop and they would look out there at the garden. And of course, our retirees, they wanted to join in. Some of our retirees were original, the lady who originally planted the hostas. Mm-hmm. They were excited, so they all joined in, and what happened after that was a garden party. (Music) Green Acres is the place to be. Hard living is the life for me. Land spreading out so far and wide. Keep Manhattan, just give me that countryside. New York is where I'd rather stay. I get allergic smelling hay. I just adore a penthouse view. Darling, I love you, but give me Park Avenue. The chores! The stores! Fresh air! High Square! You are my wife! Goodbye, city life! Green Acres, we are there! As you can see, (laughter) as you can see, as we stated in the beginning of May, this was our garden atrium. Volunteers from all over the city, all over, all the departments got together. Shannon's father pitched in, brought plants. Everybody just took ownership of this process. And today, if you look outside the City Manager's atrium window, you will see it growing and growing and growing.
So an area that was once weeds and overpopulated perennials was seen as an area rich in potential to produce vegetables, and was cleaned up, and the perennials moved to Firefighters Park. Staff moved in and planted tomatoes, peppers, bok choy, beans, lettuce, eggplant, herbs, Brussels sprouts, onions, zucchini, cucumbers, and annuals. The garden has been in less than a month, and we are already harvesting lettuce and bok chay, bok choy to share. Our progressive area, as we harvest, we plant seeds, and hopefully, we will have a full season of sharing.
Even, even staff members from neighboring communities pitched in and helped, but as you can see, if we can do this, come together, all different walks of life, with different ideas and rationales, and put something together this beautiful, imagine what kind of city we could live in, what kind of government we could have. We need to take this to DC quickly.
Departments are working together and learning something about each other. Residents are coming in and stopping to look at their atrium. I've been out there after work and have to stop because a resident is knocking on the window waving, but every time we see a resident, they are smiling. We are contributing to already proven positive results Salad Day. Troy is a great place to work. An organically grown vegetable shared by all promotes health and wellness.
Of course, we're in line with the green initiative. All communities are going green, and we're going real green. Our garden is ready to eat. All you have to do is bring your salad dressing in a bowl. It's all about keeping our workplace beautiful, putting in an effort to beautify our workspace. What we like the most about this is that Troy residents are involved, the retirees are involved, as well as the staff. And at the end of the growing season, after we've eaten our fill, we will take our plants and exchange our plants, or either donate them to NPOs in the, in the area. It's all about employees volunteering to improve public space on their personal time. And you may ask, why?
I grew up with a dad who worked for the Parks and Recreation Department, an uncle who was one of the first police officers in Troy, and an uncle who worked for our Streets Department. When I was young, they were part of a team that worked and volunteered their time to build Troy into a community. Current employees have been through a tough time, in a tough era, but we are here, working together, building what was lost. At our core, we are very much the same. We love what we do. Together, departments are working alongside one another to bring back a healthy spirit of being Troy. We are growing from within. New ideas to bring us together are working because we do want to make a difference. You may ask us why we are doing this, and the answer is simple. Employees volunteer together because we care about each other and want to share with one another. Who knows how big this can get, and if you ask if you can help, we will say, why not?
And that's the end of our present, that's the end of our presentation. Thank you.
Oh, they're not having any fun, are they? I suggested earlier this evening that this should be C5, not C4, because I don't think that Tim Rishnik wants to give a presentation after this, but C5 is Residential Cross-connection Program with an introduction by Department of Public Works Director, Tim Rishnik. Good evening, Tim.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We're here to talk tonight about a residential cross-connection program. I want to introduce Rick Sheple, he's our Superintendent of Water and Sewer, and Matt Kepcha, who is our Cross-Connection Inspector for the city of Troy, and who runs and maintains our programs. It's been said in the past that, you know, I know a lot about this, but Matt knows more than all of us, and so he's gonna do the primary presentation, and Rick and I will be here to answer questions and fill in the blanks if there's any that you have questions on. Matt?
Thank you. If you could just use the microphone, Matt, that would be great. Thank you.
By the way, Matt does just a great job for us. He actually sat on the board that helped write the cross-connection rules for the state of Michigan, so he's quite, quite involved in the cross-connection program.
Thank you. Appreciate you letting me present this evening. People, over the years, I've been working for the city for thirteen and a half years, and people often ask me, you know, "What is it that you do? What's a cross-connection inspector?" And the best answer I can give is that I go around the city, making sure people don't contaminate the water supply, and I get a pretty positive feedback about that. And of course, now we're in this residential backflow testing program that the state of Michigan has mandated, so I'm gonna talk about that this evening. And basically, what is a cross-connection? A cross-connection is a connection between the drinking water supply and any system that doesn't contain drinking water. It can be other non-potable water, or even atmospheric conditions, anything that's not drinkable water. A cross-connection control program helps prevent the contamination or pollution of our drinking water system, and backflow assemblies, which assist us in protecting the water supply, are mechanical devices and assemblies that need to be tested on a periodic basis to make sure that they continue operating and doing their job of backflow protection. And people ask, "Why is testing required on my property?" Well, the Michigan Safe Drinking Water Act of 1976 helps the state maintain control over the drinking water systems, and testing is an important component of keeping the water safe. And people are asking, "Why is this residential program coming together right now?" And this, this has been sort of a progressive program over the years. We started with commercial and industrial, we've been doing that for many years, and the state finally stepped in and said, "We, you know, we now have to have a residential testing program." So, and, you know, unfortunately, there are some possible fines, state fines, that, that could be levied against the city, and not that they would, but we have to inform you that there is a possibility that that could happen. This is part of a letter that we were, we received in August, on August 19th, from our Michigan Department of Environmental Quality Inspector, and the top portion is just the first part of the letter that we received, and the bottom portion, specially marked in yellow, says, "Currently, the city's program does not include residential inspections and enforcement. A cross-connection program, in accordance with Part 14, should be, should include a residential component to fully comply with this rule." And that Part 14 says that we have to have an inspection and testing program, and so we are now mandated to enforce this state of Michigan rule. Back siphoning is most likely what's going to happen on a lawn irrigation system. If there's a water main break, some of us in, you know, in school, we'd put the bottle of water up on top, and we siphoned it into the, the bottle on the bottom. It can happen quite easily. Water wants to flow downhill, and the water mains are down in the street. If there's a break down there, it's gonna want to suck everything back behind it, and if irrigation systems are not properly protected, we could get a lot of contaminants, insecticide, herbicides, bacteria, mold, even such things as worms have been known to come out of these systems. Up in the upper right-hand corner there, that's, that's a hose connection, and that little device there is a hose bib vacuum breaker. It's about a $5 part, and actually, most of the contamination that takes place is because of simple garden hoses. Some of them are stuck in puddles, in buckets, laundry tubs, and swimming pools. I've been told a few years ago, in Sterling Heights, about four, I believe it's four swimming pools were sucked dry because there was a water main break, and people were filling their swimming pools at the time, and the water department was getting calls, "Hey, how come my swimming pool's empty?" And because of a $5 part, the entire system was somewhat contaminated. Thank God, it's swimming pool water, which is relatively safe. It is chlorinated, but once it leaves the faucet, it's considered to be contaminated water. This is an example of an irrigation system. This is part of the packet that was sent to some residents last week, or about a week and a half ago, signifying a typical installation, or the way that the installation should be on irrigation systems. You have a main shut-off valve that goes through the, through the wall, up into the backflow preventer, and then back down underground, where it has usually zone valves and sprinkler heads. And this is the, this is what we don't want back siphoned into the system, anything that's sitting on the lawn. This is a typical vacuum breaker on the left. That's the most common one, a Febco 765 model. I'd say probably 80% of the systems have this Febco model on there. The typical way it works, the water comes up from the bottom and goes out the side, and then it goes down into the irrigation system, and those components are there are spring-loaded. They're usually plastic parts, certainly now. The old ones, a lot of them were brass, but now almost everything is plastic. They can be broken, they're subjected to lawn irrigation contractors blowing them out in the wintertime. They're not really designed for that, but that's the reality, that's what happens. Sometimes they get frozen, and a lot of times, people don't know that there's anything wrong with the backflow preventer. They're mechanical devices, so they have to be tested periodically. It's kinda like, maybe you take your car in for some service, and they, and they hook up the car to the computer, and it tells them whether something's wrong with it. You may not even know anything's wrong with your vehicle. It's the same thing with a backflow preventer. You can't always tell there's something wrong with it unless there's water leaking out of it. And this is what a backflow tester does. He takes a set of gauges, they could be an analog gauge such as this, or even a computer-driven gauge with, I think, well, well, the electronic pressure monitors, Piazzo or something like that, I'm not exactly sure. But he hooks up a gauge to the backflow preventer, and makes sure that all the components are operating properly and within pressure specifications. And we also asked residents to look at whether they have boilers and possibly water-powered sump pumps. On the upper left is a typical boiler installation that is not a testable device. Most of the boilers in residences are like this because they're not chemically treated. If they are chemically treated, they're supposed to have what's called an RP, Assembly, which is the one on the lower right. That's the one that has the test port sticking out of it. That's how you tell if it's testable or not. So if any chemicals are in there, this is the highest mechanical form of protection that we have. that we have. So who does this mandate affect? All cities within Michigan must comply with the Safe Water Drinking Act. Backflow assemblies on every commercial, industrial, and residential property in Troy, they must be tested. Troy residents will be receiving letters notifying them that the requirement for the testing in a rotating order. The first ones did go out a week and a half ago, and that is in Building District 1, which is between Adams and Crooks. Building District 2 will be next year, and that's between Crooks and Rochester. And the following year, it'll be from Rochester to Dequinter. And we'll do it on a three-year rotating basis. Now technically, according to the Michigan Plumbing Code, these are supposed to be tested annually. The state of Michigan has allowed us to go to a three-year rotating basis. I think that's a pretty good way to go. Some people have suggested 10 years, but really, we're, I've only gotten 22 reports back so far. Six of them have failed. That's a 27% failure rate. And actually, it's a lot lower than I thought it was gonna be, but we'll have to see when this program really gets rolling, what the failure rate is. A counterpart up in Grand Travis County started his program years ago, and he said, be prepared for a 75% first-test failure rate, because some of these have not been tested since they were installed possibly 30 or 40 years ago. So, and some of them may have been frozen, replaced, and repaired by someone, and not necessarily ever tested. Now, the new ones on new buildings are supposed to be tested when they're installed, so that's something we've been working on for a number of years. Here are water billing districts. I'm sorry, I should've put this up earlier. This water billing district shown, the one in the light green is the billing district that we're working on now. That's Building District 1. And how do we ensure backflows preventers are operating properly? To be in compliance with State Act 399, the Safe Water Drinking Act, we have a licensed plumber come out and do the testing on these backflow assemblies. The plumber will fill out the form. They know what to do with this. They're trained to properly test and report these backflow tests. Here's a number of municipalities that are already doing the testing. The ones in the upper right-hand corner, there's about a dozen there that are already doing the testing. And there are some that we've called that are aware of it, that are not doing the testing yet. They're currently in the process of getting their programs together. But we are trying to be proactive and comply with the state mandate to do this. So we told them that we would start doing that this year. And this is just the letter in the packet that was sent to the residences. Here's the initial letter, the cover letter, explaining what the program is. And here's a brochure that I also sent, further explaining what the program is all about and the reasons for it, and what must be done. Here's some photos I included there. The one in the middle, on the bottom, which is Page 2, that's the most typical backflow preventer on a lawn irrigation system, especially if it has zone valves. The one in the upper right-hand corner, that's one where the, like, the solenoid valve is upstream, sometimes usually in the house, and that one does not require testing. Although, we do recommend that people take the cover off and see if that piston in there is operating properly. Here's a list of some of the backflow testers in the area that have done a lot of testing for the, in the city of Troy over the years, and we find them to be reliable contractors. And here's a test form that is sent out. It is not required that they use this form. They can use their own form. Whatever the contractor wishes to do is fine with us. And if the homeowners don't have an irrigation system or boiler, they can just check that box at the upper right-hand corner, fill in their address, and send it back to us. I've probably gotten close to 200 of these back already, saying that they don't have an irrigation system. And that's all I have right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. And certainly, we'd like to educate and entertain any questions that Mayor and City Council would have at this time.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Councilman Campbell?
Do you have any idea what these plumbers charge to do this for their residents?
Typically, I'd say at least $75. It can run up, possibly do $150. If there's multiple backflow assemblies on the property, they will, almost all of them, as far as I know, will charge less. And if people get a few people on their block together, I'm sure they can get a discount. I know one contractor is already doing that, has given discounts for, if people get a few people together, he'll knock something off the price. And he also gives a senior citizen discount. So it is somewhat of a burden. There is a financial, obviously, a cost involved in this, and it's part of maintaining our system and the responsibility that homeowners and all property owners have to assist us in protecting the water supply.
Thanks.
Councilman Fleming?
Thank you, Matt. In this first district, how many letters have gone out?
6,824.
6,824 residents.
Yes.
Have to have their, these backflow valves tested?
No, probably a lot of them will not have irrigation systems. So a lot of them have already sent back that they have no systems in the home, and we're expecting, you know, quite a few. We don't know exactly how many are out there, especially in District 1. Some years ago, we did a survey, a walking-around survey, so we know where a lot of them are, but things change. People, once in a while, will take a system out or add it in that we are not aware of.
And they have until August the 31st to respond? Is that correct?
Correct, correct. We're hoping to get as much as possible. We wanna be realistic about this, and, you know, if they're a little bit late in that, that's, you know, part of reality. You know, it's a big undertaking. It's something new and different, and of course, people don't like change, and there's a cost involved, so there's a little bit of a pushback. I've talked to quite a few people so far. I've gotten a lot of phone calls, and most of them understand. They just want a little bit of assistance in determining what it is that they need to do. And there's been a few people that are a little bit upset about it, but, you know, there's been no yelling or screaming so far, so that's a good thing. And I think people understand, we're just trying to do our jobs and protect the water supply for everyone.
Councilman Fleming?
Just to follow on there, of course, nobody likes new mandates coming from the state. You don't like it either, do you?
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work? You didn't bargain for this?
A lot of phone calls and a lot of pushback, and, yeah, I'm not overly fond of it myself, but it's something that, being in the backflow profession, I know what's involved in it. I know what the dangers are. This is a passion of mine. I'm been a plumber for a long time, and even I didn't understand the full ramifications of the possibilities of backflow until I got backflow certified in 1999. And then I changed my whole attitude about it. I was totally involved in this thing. I was totally in. Because I thought, if I make a mistake as a plumber, somebody gets wet. After going through that course, I realized, if I make a mistake, I can kill somebody. And thank God, it doesn't happen very often. And it's pretty rare when somebody takes a drink of water and dies right there. It has actually happened, but that's pretty rare. What I believe happens is, over a long period of time, there is a slow infiltration of backflow, which possibly has a detrimental effect on someone's health. It's very difficult to pin something like that down. It's almost impossible to find it. So my job is to make sure it never happens.
I'd like to make a couple of comments in that, looking back at the history of backflow. Where did some of the initial incidents happen across our country? They typically happened at schools, where the football team was out, and they were drinking out of a faucet that was connected to a sprinkling system, and then the hose end got laid down into a puddle of water, because all the football players are around there, and you end up with a hole in the ground. And they lost some lives back then, and there became, the whole school system was at risk. Not only the football players themselves, because they got sucked back into the school system itself. So that is an example of where some of the things, these things have come from, these regulations, and where actual lives were put at risk, and that's where the regulations in the drinking acts were established.
One thing I'd like to mention is, on these backflow situations, the person, the home that's gonna get it first is the one that has the cross-connection in it, because that's where the water's gonna back up first. So that entices them to wanna make sure their backflow preventer is working properly, because water main break, a fire, you lose pressure in the water main, it may only happen for 15 minutes to an hour. It's that time where it might backflow into your system and get there too. So you're helping yourself out by making sure your backflow preventer works.
If I may, there was one incident, I don't remember exactly where it was, many years ago, where a gentleman was out with a hose-end sprayer, fertilizing his lawn. There was a fire. The water pressure went off. He went back into the home to investigate, and in the meantime, the water pressure came back up. He got a drink of water. He walked outside, and he died on his front lawn. So it can happen very quickly. Thank God, most of the time, it's not like that. You might get a small infiltration. It's washed out or diluted, and so most people never even know it happened.
Questions for staff?
If there are no other questions, I wanted to just ask one question that maybe wasn't, just for clarification. Fees for this program that you're charging the residents for the city of Troy are zero. All the monies that would be paid would go to the required, state law-required plumber, and none, you are not, we are not charging a fee to administer this program yet. You have a lot of time. Could you speak to that real quickly?
All those statements are absolutely correct. The payment of Matt's time, all the paperwork, mailings are all in your initial water bills as part of our administrative processes that we have been using and currently move forward with. We don't expect any increases or changes. We have not added any staff to the Water and Sewer Department. And Rick and I work with Matt when he needs extended help to provide some of the front office staff to answer telephone calls, because any time that you send out an initial mailing, you're gonna get more of an influx of calls, and then, you know, as those drop down, Matt is handling them all himself.
Councilman Fleming?
Yeah, just a comment. So we're focusing on the irrigation systems, but we know that there are other problems that we're not testing. We can't resolve everything. The gentleman's fertilizing his yard, and when the water pressure dropped and put those chemicals back into his drinking water, had nothing to do really with the sprinkler system if it was a hose. The person who's got the hose in their, the swimming pool, and have a pressure drop, and it comes back, this backflow protector, I believe, on your sprinkler system won't affect that at all. The person who has a water hose on any of their outside spigots and allows that water hose to get into some contaminated water, and there's a siphoning effect, it won't affect that either. So what we're really focusing on are the boilers and the sprinkler system. But those are not the only risks. So homeowners need to be educated, and I think we need to educate as much as we can. You know, just because you have the backflow protector on your sprinkler system and on your boiler checked out, doesn't mean you're still not at risk. I think it reduces the risk, but you're still at risk for some other things. So putting those check valves on your outside faucets, and we're not checking for that. No plumber's going around checking all of those. And practically every house in Troy has those. But I think we're doing this because we're forced to. We didn't create this on our own. We were being forced to by the state. I wish we'd had more notice. I wish this council had known about it earlier. We got the letter last August. We maybe could've communicated to these residents sooner. We are where we are. Let's do the best job we can. I think your letter was very good, very explanatory, but we've known about this since last August. When I got the first phone call, I was blindsided by it, wasn't expecting it, and had to get educated enough to speed pretty quick, which I did.
Okay, so. And I absolutely agree with you that the focus, a lot of it is because of the requirement for testing on the backflow preventers on sprinkling systems, but this will also address boilers. We've included in that pamphlet, though, all of the literature that we look at and believe needs to be out there for education, particularly, as you mentioned, Councilman Fleming, the unit that goes on the outside spigot. Those are critical to the system also, and we spent an extensive amount of time to try to look at, to make sure we touched every point that was necessary to protect the system and the residents.
Any other questions?
I see this as a voluntary compliance program, more of an education issue, I think, at this point. I look at it much like changing the batteries in your smoke alarm. Nobody can force you to do that, but if you don't have an up-to-date smoke alarm in your house, you're putting your whole family at risk. So I didn't know much about this until I started getting educated, and I think it's important that we communicate that to the public. And education's gonna cure this, not fining a city $5,000 a day if they don't do this. So I think it's a step in the right direction for education.
Councilman Teetz?
If someone loses a letter or whatnot, will they be fined or penalized, or?
The residents here at the city of Troy, we do not have a fine or penalty for them. We want compliance and education, and I think that is the basis for all the programs in Public Works that we've had over the last several years. Another program that we have that is necessary is at what time you run your sprinkling system. We have not taken any action against any resident. Rick and I go out when we get notice from the community that there's a system running. We travel throughout the community during the hotter part of the summer. We put notices out at the entrances to our subdivisions. We put that information, and Cindy puts it in our newsletters and so forth. So our focus has always been compliance with education, not violations. And again, this is the first year going through it. We're looking to educate people and to gain compliance.
Any other questions? Thank you. It's very educational. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes certificates of recognition and special presentations. Our next item of business is the, there are no carryover items. There are no public hearings scheduled, so our next item of business is public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. And I see that David Birdelson, Troy resident, would like to speak on C5.
Okay. Hello. Is our councilperson here? First thing I want to ask is, the city attorney...
Could you talk to the council, please?
Okay. First thing I'd like to ask is, the city attorney, when they quoted the state law, it said, "should be," should, should is not the same as must, the state law. So that's like saying, you should change your batteries, like you used that example of smoke. Well, they're saying you should have backflow. It's not a mandatory law saying you must have that. So I'll leave it at that. Maybe the city attorney could clear that up for us. I also wanted to go out, and they mentioned a bunch of communities that they had talked to. Well, I talked to residents in those, some of these communities, and not one. And I did Gross Point, Sterling Heights, Rochester, Rochester Hills, Bloomfield Township, West Bloomfield... Bloomfield. None of those people have to do this. So if we're the only community doing this, what is it really doing? And then I see the plan that is a three-year plan, why aren't we mailing it out to everybody at one time? That's there. The other thing is commercial buildings. Is the city of Troy and all the commercial buildings up to snuff on these backflow preventers? It seems like we're hitting the residents first. You know, we talked about, he talked about watering. I see watering going on into the streets on Crooks Road at 6:15 every morning. When the buildings are watering, they're not doing it, but do they have theirs? And does the city of Troy, does the fire hydrants have black full preventers on them? That's probably another big hit that we should be looking at instead of just the residents. Okay. They talked about not having to hire another person right now to monitor it. Well, we're just in the first phase, one of three years. What's going to happen three years down the line? And if we're going to monitor and keep going up recycling this every three years, are we going to have the manpower to monitor all this stuff, the buildings and all the homeowners? That's a question I have. I've had people at work that live in these sections that have not received the letters. I guess we're in Section 1, Adams to Crooks. They have not received their letters. Now, I don't know how they, if they sent it out to everybody. We've been told that, well, they know if you have a sprinkler system or not. Well, if they are, I guess Big Brother's watching over us when they read our water meters. I didn't know they, you know, it'd be nice if they said, okay, fill it out if you have an underground sprinkler system. Say, curse from the buildings. Could we make this part of the, you know, maybe a one-time plan, and then as people move and part of a home inspection? Can we possibly make it as you move and you have a home inspection, it's there? But to have this every three years, people are going to start questioning taxes, fees, whatever you want to call them.
Thank you, Mr. Bertelson.
Okay.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Don Shasta, Troy resident, to speak also on C-5. Good evening.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Actually, I'm Dave's neighbor. I see a very good usage for this backflow law. I have no problems with it. My issue is the implementation. I think you mentioned blindsided. You mentioned you knew about it last August, and here, the residents just got their letters last week, and we have to comply by August 31st. It's not that we can't get it done, very short notice. Also, that letter did state, the gentleman didn't mention, that letter stated, if you don't comply with this, there could be a disruption in your water service. I think that's a little harsh and a little over the top. I don't think everyone's going to comply. There's going to be people that are just going to totally ignore it. Education, I think, is a big issue for this. I think every homeowners association in the city of Troy should have a presentation from those three gentlemen. It was very educational what they told us. The other issue I have is I'm worried the plumbing companies are going to take advantage of us. They know this is coming down the pike. They can charge whatever they want. I did check, number one on the list, Big Beaver Plumbing, they charge $100. I even spoke to the gentleman that does the inspection. Very educational. He told me exactly how he does it. He will only charge for parts if parts are required, and he said it takes about 20 minutes. So that's probably middle of the road, because maybe there'll be $50 guys, maybe there'll be $150 guys. I wish the city could have put together a preferred list of plumbers with an agreed-upon price, so we as a residents don't have to shop around and don't get ripped off. We're really at these plumbers' mercy. Hopefully, they're all legitimate, upstanding companies, but I think everybody here has been ripped off more than once. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes those that have signed up to speak on this item. City Council and city administration response to public comment. Maybe we could get the city attorney to respond to the first question this evening. Ms. Bloom?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I believe that the gentleman's question was, is this required? And again, this is something that I'm going to be working with them on. I think contrary to the one gentleman, this is not something that we were all familiar with last September. We've just been informed of it. So we do need to get together and work on that. Again, the goal is compliance. I would state, however, that if there are serious issues, that that could result in disconnection from the water system, because you don't want to contaminate the entire city's water system. So that's already in the ordinances. It's a very extreme remedy. It would only be implemented if it were necessary to protect the integrity of the water system.
Then it was my understanding, though, that DEQ would fine the city if we didn't implement this program. It wasn't should, it was a shall.
That is, that is what we have been told. The Safe Water Act does allow the DEQ to set some regulations, and so again, that's something that we'll be looking at further.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Two things. One was, commercial businesses have, this has been implemented for how many years? Mr. Kishnik?
Was, they left, but I think they said 40 in part of the.
So they have been responsible for having these tests done. And the other thought I had was, slips my mind.
Councilman Teetz?
The, this isn't a new law that was passed. This is somebody sitting in an office in Lansing that said, we want to make people do this now. And that's, I think, the basic frustration, is it's a bureaucrat sitting in an office in Lansing saying, oh, yeah, local municipalities should do this, and we're going to force the taxpayer and the local municipality to hire, you know, pay someone to spend all their time working on this. It's a huge, it's a huge problem and very frustrating. I can appreciate what you're saying, and hopefully, the free market will find some enterprising plumbers that will realize the economy's the scale of just going up and down the street doing this. That said, I could completely sympathize, and three years from now, or two years from now, I'll be having to go through this headache myself at my house. But yeah, this great example of just a mandate without any rhyme or reason. It puts all the expense on us, forces the taxpayer to pay more for a plumber, and it's, and they wanted to do this annually, that every single year, I mean, does that even make sense, that have someone come out and check it annually? Anyhow, I completely sympathize with what you're saying, and we're all in the same boat, unfortunately. Somebody as much thinks they know all the answers someplace else, so, sorry.
Questions? Mayor Protem Henderson?
The other thought was the sections, Section 1, 2, and 3. I happen to be in Section 1, so I got my letter last week. And if I'm not mistaken, they're going to be Section 1, and then I'm not required for another three years to have mine done. Section 2 will be three years from next year and so on.
I think we share the frustration that the two residents spoke tonight about. If I could ask another legal question to Ms. Bloom. The city would not get into an agreed price with a plumber to save money. That's just not something that we can do, correct?
Yes, and in fact, providing the list is probably more than what we would normally do, because we can't make any recommendations as to, as to the caliber. And, you know, just again, I think that the list does provide you with persons who have, who are capable of doing that.
I think anyone on council would be happy to discuss this further with any resident. The format that we have here tonight is not an exchange format, so we'll be happy to talk to you, or I'm sure Mr. Kishnik or Ms. Bloom would be more than happy to speak with a resident regarding this. And we will do everything we can to make sure this is an easy transition for residents. As we indicated, this should be a voluntary compliance with the hopes of getting Section 1 done by August 31st, but it's not a mandate. And we are more than willing to work with the residents to make sure that we have safe water in Troy. I think that's our goal, so. Our next order of business is regular business. And I do have, I-1 is, I-1A is mayoral appointments to boards and committees, and I do have one appointment this evening. I would like to appoint Robin Beltrameini to the Local Development Finance Authority, which is the LDFA, for the term that expires 6/30/2018.
Support.
By the chair, supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we appoint Robin Beltrameini to the LDFA with the term that expires 6/30/2018. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. There are no council appointments this evening, so will we move to I-2, board and committee nominations? I do not have any nominations this evening, and there are no city council nominations this evening. I-3 is a request for closed session. There will be a closed session this evening at the end of the council meeting. Next item of business is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull an item on the consent agenda this evening? Get somebody to move the resolution.
Mayor.
Mayor Protem Henderson.
I'd like to move forward the consent agenda as printed.
By Mayor Protem Henderson, supported by Councilman Fleming, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented this evening. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. If you were here for a consent agenda item this evening, they all have been approved. Next is the K items. There are no announcement of public hearings, and no memorandums have been submitted. No one has signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. There are no council referrals. I'm sorry.
There was a resident that signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda? Mr. Savage?
You're right. I will back up.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council. You have these little maps, little, or Mr. Pennington? I think it, yes, you didn't get one.
One. Thanks, sir.
Okay, the area, the arrow on the map before you points to a proposed bike path across city-owned parkland from the west end of Trammelé to Livinoyes. The distance is only about a quarter of a mile. This would provide the only safe bike and pedestrian route for residents east of Livinoyes to the civic center, the library, or the community center. I have, in recent weeks, spoken to officials of parks and rec, planning, and city management, and I received a very positive reaction. I proposed this bike path to previous administrations about eight years ago, but could never get it off the back burner. The reason I bring this to the council at this time is not to try to bypass administration, but to add urgency to the proposal. The proposed development adjacent to that parkland and the start of summer holidays makes it imperative to establish this bike path as soon as possible. The community center is probably the most attended building in Troy. The city hall and the library may be the brains of Troy, but the community center is the heart of Troy. The surrounding environment should complement the community center, and what better complement than parkland? We could have a bike path there by July 4th. Please give it your utmost consideration and priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. There are no council referrals. Council comments are next on the agenda. Any council comments this evening? Next are reports. Anyone on council wish to speak to a report in the agenda packet this evening? Councilman Fleming?
Yes, Mayor, the department reports. I spoke with Mr. Kishnik earlier regarding Item 02C, Timeline for Use of Public Land. And we all had a little summary in there and a timeline, but hoping to get a little more explanation as what we're looking at doing here and what the thought process was for use of public land. I know it's just in the infancy stages, but if Mr. Kishnik or could have staff give us a little more detail on what's happening here on 02C?
Thank you, Councilmember Fleming. The, this is a bit of a longstanding issue. When I first got here, I know Mr. Bovensee, who's here, and many people on staff were having meetings, particularly with the city attorney's office, to address what to do about these requests that come in, typically verbally, and Mr. Miller's been involved a lot as well in terms of opportunities to use parkland, public lands for a nonprofit or a private use, whether it's an indoor soccer facility, or whether it's a zip line, or, you know, just to go to the extremes there, two things. And so, a year and a half went by, and I put together a group who could at least get their arms around the issue and put a timeframe together to say, what should this look like, at least in the early stages? Should we only consider nonprofits? Should we consider nonprofits for profits? Should we consider nothing, especially in light of the charter limitations? And also in light of the tennis bubble and how that's functioned over the years, which predates the charter limitations? But, so, a group was put together, and I said, could you at least give us a timeline of where this could go if we do, you know? One idea was to just discuss with a nonprofit who wants to do it and negotiate the terms and see if it would be beneficial to the city of Troy, residents, youth, the city council, and bring that forward. And then the conversation became, well, what if somebody else wanted to do it in the same spot? You know, why would you pick one over the other? So we just, the issue snowballs and becomes very complex in terms of all the different opportunities. And so, the timeline is simply meant to say, here's at least what's being proposed right now to go through to consider the issue. And how that comes out is, has not been determined yet, but certainly the timeline, I wanted to get out there in case anyone, you know, again, like the backflow prevention, there's never a good time to roll this stuff out. I mean, we could educate it three years ago until we say you have to do it by August 31st. It's not real, right? So we can, again, we're trying to get information out there and let you know, this is the debate. This is the issue. Here's what we're thinking. Here's the pros and cons to let you know it's even on the radar screen. So that's the brief summary.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other comments about reports this evening? Don't see anyone that has signed up to speak on an item or not on the agenda from a member of the public outside of Troy this evening. There are no study items, so we will adjourn for a closed session in the boardroom in about five minutes.